I'll remind folks that unfortunately, the format of town meeting is not a question and answer session. It's not conducive to just standing, having your asking questions and getting them answered right away. If you have questions and you do need more information to be able to vote, certainly come up and ask the question. But somebody answering that question is dependent upon somebody at a later time in the meeting and in the debate coming to the front and seeking the microphone and answering those. There's not an easy opportunity for somebody just to stand up, answer your questions, and then have you continue on. I suspect that there will be a call for a paper ballot tonight. If there is one, we'll vote with the papers that you got when you came in. Please don't lose those. You will need one to vote. Additionally, if for some reason there's a second paper ballot, you'll be given a different color when you come up to vote. So even if you don't choose to cast a yea or nay vote on the item, if you come up and you wish to cast a vote but not yea or nay, just fold it in half and put it in with both the yes and no still attached. And you'll be given the second card by which a second vote will happen. Just like always with town meeting, if you're unsure of how to accomplish something, if you wish to make a motion and you're not sure how to do that, just come to the front, seek the microphone, and ask for some guidance. And we can help you accomplish your goals. Are there any questions about the procedure before we get going tonight? Great. Then the last item, if anybody wishes to make a motion that hasn't been already provided to the town clerk in writing, if you wish to amend one of the main motions, for instance, please just make sure that the town clerk has a copy of that in writing beforehand. If there's an urgency to get a motion on the floor, you can certainly come up and make the motion, but know that before we go on, we'll need to have a copy of that in writing to the clerk. Thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll proceed with Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town waive the reading of the warrant and the notice to the constables and act on the motions of the following articles.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Clearly passes unanimously. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pass over this article.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none? Yes.
I'm Barry Boardner, 35 Holly Avenue. Passing over an article is one thing, but I think the good people of Northfield deserve a better description of why we are passing this article over. Could you elaborate, please?
We felt that this article wasn't worth the potential problems that could be brought up by voting on it. We felt that it was for show, and in essence, we didn't want to enter into more controversy for the sake of controversy. It's not typical to vote on singular contracts within the school department's budget. So we felt that this was primarily for show, and there's no sense in creating more potential problems for the town by voting on this.
I will add, as a matter of procedure, this article seeks to do something which town meeting is not authorized to do. Therefore, in my judgment, there are virtually no motions that I could accept on this particular article, other than a motion to pass over.
All right. Thank you for the explanation.
Certainly. Any further discussion on passing over Article 2? I doubt that was connected to you hitting that button, Dan, but that was awfully...
This is a fire drill.
When we last left, we were just about to vote on a motion to pass over Article 2. Article 2, a motion to pass over. Just giving everybody a chance to make sure they know where we are. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Clearly passes unanimously. On Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $4,607,561 to pay the town of Northfield's share of the budget of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the amount recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I will ask for a... Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask for a paper ballot on this.
Is there support for a paper ballot on this item when we vote? Just raise your hands if there's support for a paper ballot. Clearly, there's support. Thank you, Lois. You may continue.
Okay. I'm going to start by reiterating the role of the Finance Committee. Mass General Law requires a town of our size to have a finance committee whose responsibility it is to make recommendations to the voters as to items being considered at town meetings. We, as volunteers, put a lot of thought into that responsibility. However, the final decisions rest with the voters, not the appointed Finance Committee members that are here, not any elected officials. Some of you may recall that our annual town meeting in May, we purposely did not ask for a vote on our Pioneer Valley Regional School District assessment because we were in the process of working with the other three towns in the district on these assessments. None of those other towns voted to support these assessments at their annual town meetings. Earlier, the four towns had told the school committee that we would recommend the assessments for fiscal '20 if there were no increases to any town. The school did not change their request based on that. Subsequently, we compromised and said that we would recommend the school assessments if any savings from school closings were applied to reduce our assessments. With their vote to close the Lyden School, they applied $47,000 of that savings of $188,300 to reducing our assessments and used the remainder for other spending in the school system. Last week, we had another meeting of the four towns. When I refer to that, I'm talking about Berniston, Lyden, Warwick, and Northfield. And it's been many, many years since we've been meeting like this, but we've been... we've had four, five meetings now to talk about common interests. We had another meeting last week and agreed that we could recommend a figure to our voters that was the school committee's voted assessment, less each town's share of the entire savings from closing the Lyden School, as we had previously asked. The Northfield Finance Committee and the Select Board each had subsequent meetings to the four-town meeting and voted accordingly. That's as to the recommendations tonight. We're recommending the figure represented by the assessment again received from the school committee, less our computed share of additional savings from closing the Lyden School. And that's what we are presenting. We recommend voting the $4,607,561 as Northfield's share of the budget. Again, it represents the assessment based on the school's budget, less our proportionate share of the savings from closing the Lyden Elementary School. I'm stressing that as the reason for our figure. We have made our decision to recommend this amount based on what we feel is our best judgment as to the use of our taxpayers' money. We have listened to the explanations put forth by the school district as to their needs, but feel that we have to consider the needs of all of the departments of the town. These departments have been conservative in their requests for many years, and we cannot make reductions in the services provided by such departments as highway. Think about the roads that the school buses have to travel on. Other departments of fire, police, EMS, library, transfer station, inspection services, assessors, council on aging, do we want to sacrifice any of those? At one of the four-town meetings, representatives of the Department of Revenue and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education told that this district has been supporting our schools at 64 percent above the required minimum contribution, and stated that this is much higher than others throughout the state. We also are looking to the future and feel that continued increases requested by the school district will be unsustainable, and we are concerned for our taxpayers who have to bear these costs. We ask you support... that you support our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Yes. If you've come up, seek the mic.
Yes, Lois, I'd like to say thank you for all your hard work and the hard work of the Finance Committee in dealing with this. It's not completely clear to me, though, are we voting on a budget that contains our portion of the $47,000 that they gave us back? Or have we modified the amount that we're going to authorize, and it's our portion of the total savings from the closure of the Lyden School?
Further discussion? Yes, Lois.
They had reduced their request by the first amount from Lyden, but they didn't apply all of the savings from Lyden, and we're reducing it by that extra amount.
So our budget contains that extra amount? We're authorizing contains that extra amount?
Takes that down, yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes. Pat.
Pat, Chair of Pine Meadow Road or Pine Meadow Cross Road, Vice Chair of the School Board. I would like to read a prepared letter that was written by our Director of Finance that was given to us at our last school committee meeting for all those that are confused like I have been throughout this process. This sort of explains a few of the little nitty-gritty that hasn't been advertised enough, I guess. If you get bored, close your ears, because it's a little long. As we gather here tonight at the last school committee meeting of the '18-'19 school year, PVRSD is in a different place than we were at the end of last year. It's my privilege to say the first time over 10 years this budget was not frozen, and even with revenue shortfalls in transportation and tuition, I anticipate the district having an E&amp;D account. There is no... this is no small feat. The administration and staff of all the schools in this district pulled together this year and did an amazing job managing the budget while providing top-notch education for our students. Last year, many state groups, DESI, DLR, and the legislators were working together to figure out how to help us solve our financial issues. I worked with DESI to secure an advance in local aid to get us started for the school year, where we figured out what our deficit really was. Was it $2 million? Or was it $500,000? John and I... John being the superintendent, and I hadn't even been hired last year at this time. But we are both ready, working together as fast as possible, to do whatever we could to right this ship and keep it from sinking. We worked together with the school committee to revise a budget prepared by the prior administration in order to accurately fund the true... find the true expenses and needs of the district for '19, which was passed on September 13th with no increase to the towns. We are also burdened with a $270,000 lunch deficit. How in earth did it get that far? And how are we going to create a lunch program that is self-sustaining? We hired a food service manager this year, and Rob did a wonderful job at managing this program, from the menu analysis and prep to inventory management, staff collaboration, and et cetera. We worked together every month to make sure we were in track with projection for the year. At the first time in 11 years, our school lunch fund is projected to be, in the black, at least $5,000. In the midst of all this, just five months into our employment here at PVRSD, we were asked to create a budget that is sufficient for the education of our students. After many meetings of the Budget Subcommittee, Administrators, and School Committee, we're presented with a budget for the towns at a 1.65 percent increase to their assessments. This assessment was further decreased when the school committee voted to educate our students from Lyden to Berniston Elementary next year. In addition, we made over $500,000 in cuts and efficiency to the budget that was originally established with a 7.6 percent increase. Our four-member towns defeated the proposed budget at the annual town meeting in May. John and I attended all those meetings. We split up for Warwick and Northfield as they were scheduled on the same night. With that said, I am disheartened about the... with Finance Committee and Select Boards passing over the budget, claiming they had not received the updated assessments with Lyden savings. This was 100 percent incorrect. Letters dated May 2nd were mailed and delivered electronically to the towns so that numbers could be amended on the floor. Warwick was the only town that actually took a vote on the budget rather than passing over that evening. Our district on a whole, school committee and administrative staff have been asked to be more transparent, provide more information, and we have done just that. We have provided public and town committees with information regarding the budget in multiple ways so they could best understand their assessments and the increases. It is in service to the taxpayers that our member towns for this information isn't being passed on to them or discussed on the town meeting floor, even within their own committees. There has been many questions as to how the town assessments are going up $104,462 if the district's budget is only increasing by $1,101. Information explaining those decreases and increases of all the revenue sources that made up the $1,101 cumulative increase was provided to the Finance Committee Chairs on the 7th of June. With a decrease to the transportation reimbursement of $111,000 as a direct effect of cutting two buses in fiscal year '19, there was no way to avoid the increase unless an overall school district budget decreased. If the towns fail our budget on their 17th meeting, which is this today, either by voting it down or not voting on the proposed amount provided by the school district, we would be operating in a 1.12 budget, which means that the state comes in and says, "You can have 1/12 of last year's budget, but only that amount of money will be given to you each month." And the towns will be assessed accordingly. What does this mean? It means that the town's assessment will be only $1,101 less annually than they would be if the budget passed. If that stands, the Commissioner of Education has approved and verified our revenue budget for all the other line items at this time. The 1.12 percent budget may not sound bad, but it means we can only spend 1.12 percent of our budget each month. That limits us to how much we can pay for expenditures monthly after we cover the payroll. This provides a program... a problem at the beginning of the school year, because on top of paying insurance policy premiums, technology renewals, retirement contributions, and assessments, we have to order supplies for day one of school for the kids. Not having a past budget will limit the supplies and materials we can order before the school starts. We will lose discounts we get from July 1st for policies and lose an $8,822 discount from our retirement contribution, because even if we have the cash flow, we can't legally pay those items. Quick math suggests that we start losing... that we will be losing approximately $9,900. With that, I ask the school committee members to be our voice. If you don't understand or feel comfortable discussing the budget... I think the rest of this is... let me see. Keep in mind that a $110,000 budget, this expense budget, will have a residual effect resulting in what it was inherited from the prior year's mistakes. If we don't have to pay those bills, we would be coming to the towns with a decreased assessment. So please don't let the mismanagement of the finances in the past negatively affect the education and offerings of the students in our district. Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes.
Good evening. Joanne Flag, 20 Parker Avenue. First of all, I would like to thank you and appreciate the work of all of our town committees and our school committee. I know it can feel pretty thankless, and I know it's very time-consuming, and you have to put your heart into it to do a good job. And also the taxpayers, including you folks, for supporting our schools. I'm in education myself. I work over in Fitchburg, and we're pretty poor over there, too. I have to say that I'm dismayed about how this is playing out. I think that budgets need to be kept in control. I think schools need to be supported and in a very responsible way, coming from the school district, so they have a very, very difficult road to keep things in control for the townspeople. That's very important. I feel like in past towns that I voted in, the motion was made to vote the school committee's amount, and then the recommendation was made to support or that the Finance Committee did or did not support. That way, the townspeople could really decide whether they wanted to vote on the original amount or the amended amount by a Finance Committee. But I feel like here, we don't have a choice. Either way, if we vote what's written in this, we're not going to have a budget that would get us the support we need. If we don't pass what the school committee says, we have $10,000 of extra spending. We're not going to get the money back that the Finance Committee is looking for anyways. And I know for a fact that the school committee can work to spend frugally this year and return money back to the towns at the end of the fiscal year. It's been done, very quietly. I don't know about here, but in other places, and most of the people didn't know about it. So I'm dismayed about the way this is happening. I don't even have an option to vote on what the school committee presented to us. I don't know what the cost of special town meetings are, but I know that they're not cheap, and we'll be forced to have another one by due process. So I'm wondering how many people think that maybe we should not pay the state all of our taxes because the state's not supporting our school district? Maybe we should take some of our money from the state, what we owe the state, and put that towards our school district? Let's hold them responsible. I feel like feet are being held to the fire here, but I feel like it's not in the right direction. And I guess I would like... I guess Pat confirmed for me that this is really a no vote on the school committee So I guess I would ask people to think pretty carefully before this vote, and I would suggest an amendment. We can do that, right? Make an amendment to change the amount?
Absolutely.
To the school committee recommended amount?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just prior to making such a motion, if the mover would just make sure to write that down on a scrap of paper, what they're actually making a motion for, and make sure the town clerk has a copy of it, either right after you make it, because you need to read it, or ideally beforehand. Thank you. Yes?
Kathy Malsh, By Commonwealth Ave. In order to make this amendment, just for clarity, do I need to read the original article or just the amendment?
You just read your amendment to change whatever pieces of the main motion you wish to change.
Thank you. Okay. The amendment I'd like to propose, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $4,675,882 to pay the town of Northfield's share of the budget for Pioneer Valley Regional School District for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the amount recommended by the school committee.
So just as a matter of clarification, the motion to amend, even though there was quite a bit red, it just replaces the number in the main motion, which was $4,607,561? It strikes out that number and replaces it with $4,675,882? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second for that motion before we proceed?
Correct.
Thank you. We'll now move into debate on this amendment. Would you like to speak first as the mover of the amendment?
Sure.
If so, can you just give Dana... Here.
In recognition of the hard work that has gone into trying to balance an ever-so-tightening budget, I do want to recognize the hard work everyone has put into it. But as an educator here and having raised three children through this district and as a resident of Northfield for almost 30 years, I feel strongly that, looking at it from the inside as well as the outside, that our district has worked really hard to manage our budget very, very carefully, ever-so-watchfully. And I think the school committee, having attended several school committee meetings and watching over the process, worked very, very hard to come up with a reasonable budget that would support the important programs that will hopefully continue to provide quality education and attract families and students to our district in a positive direction instead of in a negative one.
Thank you. Yes?
Moderator, I just had a question, if I could ask.
Yep. If you can just go a little closer to the mic, because I'm not sure if folks can hear you.
Okay. I just had a question. In looking at what was handed out, is it... it looks to me like the Northfield share would actually be $98,000 less than last year. So I just wanted to be clear that... about whether that... I'm reading that correctly, that Northfield would actually be almost $100,000 less than last year.
The motion to amend has actually increased the number. So with the motion to amend, it's closer to 25... $30,000 difference? Right? Am I doing my math right?
Left.
Yes, sorry. Sorry. Yes, it's a $30,000 difference. The motion to amend would still bring the school budget up to $31,000 less than it was last year? Further discussion on this item? Yes?
I just want to say that, at least now, I feel like I have a choice, because the way it was done before, whether we voted yes or we voted no, the result was the same. And that's not really a vote, and that's not really a choice. So I might have just missed what was said, but I was wondering if the Finance Committee amount that was recommended in the original article would have been enough had all four towns done the same thing, or even Northfield, to cover the governor's... whoever he is, 1/12 budget that we would have been required to pay? Would it have covered that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Tracy.
I just want to say that the four towns have been working together over the past year, I think as Lois indicated in her description. This is the first time the four towns have ever agreed on anything, so it's a milestone. Yes, we do save $98,000, but Berniston goes up 14 and Lyden goes up 44. Even with the lower number we proposed, those other two towns are taking a serious hit. So some of what led us to the recommendation was some solidarity with our other towns in the Pioneer District.
Yes.
Barry Boardner, again, from 35 Holly Avenue. I'd like to just back up and talk a little bit about how we got here. We all know we have state mandates that are underfunded. We've got a rural school that is complying with a lot of mandates that were based on what the eastern side of the state needed, that we... some of them we probably do not need, and we simply can't afford. We also have bad formulas for the sharing, the revenue sharing with these schools. Northfield has a lower population than Berniston but pays more towards the Pioneer budget. All you need is two people in the town of Northfield with $1 million on their 1040, and by population demographic, it ups our overall demographic for income by $700. And if you base it on 1040 tax forms, people are actually paying tax... 1040 tax forms, tax, people are actually paying taxes, it's north of $1,100. These kind of things put us in a difficult position. These are the things that you need to be talking to your legislatures about. It's being worked on now, but that point has to be hammered home. We have in Northfield an abundance of set-aside land of all types. Chapter 61 conservation land, we have state land, Department of Recreation land, believe it or not, it's more than half of our town. I'm all for setting aside land, love outdoor recreation, it's a noble cause, but a little town like this just can't afford it. At some point, it needs to stop. It's breaking the back of our budgets. We've overbuilt our schools when we had a swollen population. We're kind of stuck with that and we have to deal with it. We also know that we've had basically a dysfunctional school committee. I'll say it. I have no problem saying it. They closed the Lyden School. We're hoping we're going to get full amount of money out of it and now we're not. And now we have an amendment on the floor that wants to change that, to give them that amount of money back. We've had a lot of good people in all of these towns, finance committees and select boards jointly meeting together, finally coming to a consensus and agreeing on something. These are the people that we've elected. They're giving their own personal time to do this and they've accomplished a lot together and I think we should be proud of what they've done. Further, this contract with the superintendent, just I think makes most of the people in this room see red. We have a Greenhorn superintendent, albeit probably a really nice guy, could be very, very capable, but even Tom Brady's contract is tied to performance. We have to have some way of guaranteeing that this guy is going to perform for us. If we can't, we need a way to get rid of him or we shouldn't have automatic pay raises. That was very irresponsible on the part of the school committee. I don't know if they are desperate for an individual to take the helm or what was going on. So from my standpoint, I'm a businessman, running this like a business, I certainly agree with the finance committee and what all the select boards and all the finance committees of all the towns have recommended, and I can't recommend this amendment.
Further discussion on the item? Folks, please, applauding only slows us down. There'll be plenty of time to express your views when we come to vote. Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none? There's been a request for a paper ballot on this amendment. Is there support for that? Seeing sufficient support, we're going to have a paper ballot for this amendment. I'm going to reiterate, the amendment is to remove the $4,675,882 number in the main motion and to increase it to $4,675,882. So for the paper ballot, if you do me just a second, we're going to, I've learned my lesson from last time, we're going to come down this aisle, vote, and then go out that way. So if you're on this side, you might want to give it a minute because it's probably going to be a pretty quick line that forms on this side. Come down this aisle, vote, make sure you get a yellow card in exchange for your white card. If you don't want to vote on this one, but you want to vote on the main motion, come down anyway. Put your ballot in there untorn so you can get a yellow one. I should have said, if anybody has difficulty coming down here to vote, if they're in a wheelchair, if they just have difficulty coming down here, stand your seat if you wish. We can bring the ballot box to you at the end if coming down to vote is a challenge. Sorry for not saying that earlier. Well, the last few people who were walking down vote. If you didn't vote and you'd like the ballot box brought to you, if you'd, in a moment, raise your hand. You can wait until the last couple of people vote, but... All right. If you need us to bring the box, if you just raise your hand or have somebody near you, raise your hands. Yeah. Cool. We're on our way back here. Is there anybody on this side, on my left, your right, who needs it brought back to them? All right. So it's traditional for us, after we do a ballot vote, to move on to the next items while the particular item is counted. It's a little different this time because this has been an amendment to a main motion. So we can't go back into the main motion without knowing if this passes. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to move on to the next article and leave this article open until we have the results from this particular vote. Is there any objection to us moving on to Article 4 while we wait for this tabulation? Seeing none, I'm going to call Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to create a regional school district planning committee in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 14.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Tracy?
The, in order for us to study joining another school district, as if Gilmontague School District has been discussed, we need to set up an official committee to do that. There are two ways to do that. One is that all four towns' select boards vote to do that and the school committee. Unfortunately, the school committee has not taken up the issue. So if all four town meetings vote to create this research committee, then it will happen.
Is there further discussion on this item? Yes?
I have no problem with setting this up, but my concern is that we keep speaking to Gilmontague. I think there's a lot of other places out there, although two years ago, when I started investigating, as I was chair of the committee at that time, I spoke to Marhar, to Gilmontague, to Franklin County Tech, to Greenfield, and to Mohawk. At that point, nobody was interested. That was two years ago. Things are completely different now. Frontier, we didn't contact just because demographically, we didn't think it would work. But I have no problem with exploring this, but I think we shouldn't just keep in our minds Gilmontague because there's a lot of other places out there that we could go to. So if Gilmontague or any specific school is left out of this discussion, I think it would be a lot more appropriate.
Further discussion? Yes?
I have a question. The Article 2 that we passed over, would the superintendent having a five-year contract be any barrier to this committee that we're proposing?
Any further discussion or anybody who has the answer wish to speak?
We're turning to our town attorney who's here this evening. There's no barrier to forming the committee, no. That would have to be worked out, but there's no time limit on what district you're talking about or how long it would take to even make that happen. So that would be part of the discussion, I assume. Because different districts would have different superintendents in different phases of their contract anyway, so that would be part of what would be taken up as part of the exploratory group.
Further discussion?
It's more just a quick comment. Deborah Potey, 36th name. I think creating an exploratory group is a fabulous idea. I am tired of waking up and worrying whether it's going to be AP classes banned, teacher leaving. I am exhausted from that process. I want a more fulsome, stable school system for my children and for all the children who live in Northfield. So I think it's a fabulous idea.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes?
Kristen Gonzalez, 28 East Street, Northfield. I would like to remind folks or bring to the attention that on the recent school committee agenda, having a presentation by Steve Hemmon to discuss this and explain the process of what a committee would entail in the process of doing this search and study. Steve Hemmon was not available to us and is going to be coming back, so it's not something that the school committee has taken off the table. It's just that we do not have the information to take the necessary vote. We would like Steve Hemmon present so that we can ask questions, get appropriate answers, and understand the entire process in a thorough way so that we can make the decision. Steve Hemmon is a representative that was appointed to initiate this study with the Hart Committee.
We, if you'd like to speak, you can certainly come up and speak.
Nolan Kitfield, 19 Matt Herman Station Road. My question is just, he's not affiliated with a certain, is he affiliated with a certain school district? Or no?
Steve Hemmon is the Assistant Director, I guess you want to call it, of Rural Schools Initiative. So he works with all the rural schools within Massachusetts.
Thank you. Further discussion on the item? Seeing none? All those in favor of creating the exploratory committee, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay? Clearly passes unanimously? If you give me one moment? Having finished Article 4, we're going to move back to Article 3. The vote on the motion to amend was 68 in favor, 55 opposed. So the main motion is now amended. So we're going to return to Article 3, as I mentioned. We're going to return to primary debate on the motion as amended. So I'm going to read the amended motion just so everybody is on the same page. "I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $4,675,882 to pay the Town of Northfield's share of the budget for the Pioneer Valley Regional School District for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the amount recommended by the finance committee." That last little bit, obviously, is contrary and that's fine. It's the dollar amount that is binding. $4,675,882 is the new amount on the floor for debate. Is there any further debate on the main motion? Yes?
The amendment, as I proposed, said the amount recommended by the school committee, not the finance committee.
I may have misheard you as we read the actual motion. The dollar amount is the important, and that's what's correct. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on the item? Yes, in the back.
Hi. Bernie Budrow, Old Wendell Road, Northfield. How does this amended amount, where we've just raised it, affect the agreements we had with the Finance Committee and everybody worked with these other towns? We've just voted to raise the amount. Now, are the other towns gonna have to vote on that raised amount? Or does it, you know, where does this set us back to? You know, we did an amendment here at this town meeting, but at these other town meetings, are they doing an amendment? We vote on one thing, they vote on something else? Just a question. I don't know if anybody can answer that.
For the next person to speak, you've gotta sit down. Thank you. Tracy, if you would, and then whoever's coming down, certainly come on down and you can speak next.
It takes three of the four towns to pass a school committee budget. So, we're all voting tonight, all four towns, at the same time. So, we don't know what each other are doing. Part of that was the strategy. If we vote the higher number and the other three vote the lower number, the school budget will fail. It will go back to the school committee, and they have a choice to accept what... Accept that lower number or come back again with another number.
As a matter of information as well, because this town will have voted that number, any final school budget that is that number or less, we will not need to come back to town meeting for. Any final budget that is above that number, we may need to come back to town meeting to vote to authorize that. That shouldn't be viewed as pushing you one way or the other, just a matter of clarification about future town meetings and what this vote would do. Any further discussion on this item? Yes.
Hi. Good evening. Karen Budrow, Old Wendell Road, Northfield. I have a few questions, and I'm not sure if people can answer them, but it's things I wanna throw out here. First of all, thank you, everyone, taxpayers, teachers, and so forth, for putting so much interest into this. This is a very, very sensitive issue. Our son went through the Northfield Public School System, and we really enjoyed it. So, when we sit here and we talk about salaries and taxes and apportionments, we're talking about real people. We're talking about children. We're talking about their adults that pay mortgages and pay taxes and have obligations. So, this is not an easy conversation. Thank you all for your work on this. I see a lot of line items on this sheet here, but I have a couple of questions about the overall figure, alright? Every school, and I do this weekly, every school is facing declining enrollments. How are the declining enrollments affecting the 4.6 some-odd million here? You did answer part of my question in regards to the next article with forming a committee. What I don't see is how is this 4.6 million addressing the downward turn in enrollment? The other question that I had is, and maybe it can't be answered here, is in your schools and in your classrooms, DESI mandates a top number for sections, which is twenty-seven children per section. I don't think that's a good number. That's a lot of kids. For science classes, it's twenty-four, and that's pretty much nationwide because of OSHA. So, my general question to the school committee, with Mrs. Shearer, she's around here someplace, to the school committee and the folks is, what is the average section enrollment? Special Ed out of the mix. What is the average section enrollment for Pioneer? Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes.
I've heard a lot of thank yous here tonight of everybody's time and energies, and being someone who's been on the Finance Committee for a while and has also served on a multiple of other committees in town and boards, I wanna state that being on the Finance Committee, it's a very, very different view that we come from. And we have heard for two years the difficulty of the school's budget. No matter whose fault it is, it's gotten so bad that the state has come in to help guide us through this process. There's a lot of positives for that, and there's been a lot of negatives to that. That person has helped the school through some processes, but the town has gotten no help going through this process. So, we are left here on our own. And one of the things that we have talked about a great deal is not just this coming year's budget, but the next two to three years ahead. Because if we continue down this path of whether it's a 1% increase or a 1/6 or a zero-level percent increase, but we've already been told very clearly that we will never have a 0% just because of all the fixed costs. So, we are not looking only at this year. We are looking at the possibility of a 1, 1.5, a $2 million debt. We've been told, I don't know how true those figures are, that the towns could have because of... Not the towns, the school would be in debt because of the way things are running. We have already sucked up the total dollars for the closing of the Lydon School. We've sucked up more from a reduction in staff members at the Warwick. I don't know where any other money is gonna come up, come to us to suck, to be sucked up to continue at this pace. So, we, as a board, have been struggling with what we do next year, what we do the year after that, because we all wanna vote yes for education, but we also, our responsibility is the overview of the whole town. And as hard as it is for us to vote this, many of us have been in education either through children or working or supporting it. It's very difficult, but our responsibility is also going forward for every department in the town. And I just have to say, it's not just this year. We're all feeling the pinch very, very hard.
Thank you.
So, I would recommend that we vote this budget down for future financial stability of the town.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes.
Bob Henry, One Thirty-Seven Wanamaker Road. It is a tough decision. We all want the best for our children, for our grandchildren. I just got a couple of points. I went out and I actually, last time, I chastised a few and said I wanted to gather some objective analysis. So, I actually challenged the State Attorney General Office, now the Secretary of State, and I worked with the town administrators. I actually got this from Pioneer. And there are just some numbers. I'm not chastising, give me a 10 or 20% for margin of error, but one thing I just wanna address in general is our student-to-teacher ratio. And it might be fine, and again, I'm not a teacher. I'm not in the professional arena in that category. And so, I don't know the sped requirements. I don't know the paraprofessionals. I don't know that. But it concerns me when we get down by, and this is, the Mass Department Education says we're at 13.2 to 1, but my data's right, and Pioneer went from 311 to 289 students. We might be more down to like 10 to 1. Again, give me a margin of error 10 to 20%. So, I'm just concerned that as we get down in students, then we should be going down in staff and/or teachers, in my humble opinion. And again, I'm not, I'm not a teacher. I'm not a professional in that. It's just a general analysis I'd like to make and ask for consideration. It might not be, play it might be doable, but I'm saying, why wouldn't we, when we looked at the national average, it's 16 to 18 students per class? And when I was a kid and I went here, when I went to other schools, it was thirty, thirty kids per teacher. But anyway, bear with me. And I know the teachers in the area work hard, and I know you're phenomenally committed to the students, and we want that. We want the best for our kids. So, my question is this. When we consider this budget, why don't we look at the total number of students that we have here today? Not yesterday and tomorrow. And why don't we, if we can, put more students-to-teacher ratio? Increase the pay? Go from the local 60, 65, 69,000 per year to 77... Now, I'm gonna save you money. Hang on. Bear with my thought here. I see a slap in your head. Bear with me. So, again, but what we're gonna do is, we're gonna... What you would do is, you would cut down the total number of employees, the total number of teachers, and then you'd have less retirements to pay into. You could pay a little bit more salary, put them more in par with the state so they don't wanna migrate out of Franklin County. Keep them here and give our kids the best bang for the buck, but yet keep the retirement and the wages down where they should be. The retirement's gonna kill us. So, again, why not increase, consider increasing the class size? Why not increase the pay? Reward those that are doing it. Less the number of teachers. But again, I've been through this. I've been through this with the federal government many, many times. And it's called a RIF, a Reduction in Force. No one gets displaced. Everyone's like, "Don't do that. I'm gonna lose my job." No, you're not. We're gonna work with the rest of the communities. Put the right, smart people, put business people in this thing together. Put other employees together. Let's say Pioneer asked to downsize, and we gotta get rid of two math teachers. Find out other schools that use them. Find out, find out other schools that might be able to give incentive. Greenfield might be able to say, "Hey, we got two that have been waiting to retire. We just been having, hang on." So, no one loses a job. No one loses a job. I think it's viable. I think there's other options. We gotta start looking at this creatively, and we gotta look at this as not being an emotional decision. So, my question, my question in closing, which I've never seen as a decision tree from anybody, is when we drop so many students, where do we drop in teachers and where do we stop in staff? The reciprocal of that is, the reciprocal of that is this. We have growth. How many kids do we take? Five, 10, 15 kids do we take on before we hire another teacher? Before we hire another staff? So, those are all good questions, I think. But once again, before we vote on this, I'd like to know right now, what's the true number? And as we downsize the number, what cuts have we made that we can sustain it financially? Because everyone in here, at least a percentage of us, say it's not sustainable. And that concerns me. So, I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you had your hands up.
I was shaking my head. Andrew Harrison, Ash Willet Road, the famous Ash Willet Road. I had been teaching for 35 years. That's why I was shaking my head. I teach classes of 25. I teach classes of 10. And trust me, that class of 10 is probably about 40, when it comes right down to it. So, we can have a talk about what that's... But I'm not here to talk about... On a side note, there has been massive reductions in staff over the last two to three years. And if you want me to get personal, I can. Alright? I'm up here to talk about if we don't vote this in, we go to a budget that is decided on a monthly basis. Is that correct? Okay. I am a department head. I have to do all the ordering for my department. I just order for 180 kids a digital textbook. Now, we're looking, we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to... $15,000 over five years for 180 kids. That's out of my control. That's out of your control. That's what I have to deal with. That's what this finance committee has to deal with. That's reality. And that's not even the paper and the clip, paperclips and all this other crap that teachers have to hopefully get paid out of budget or it comes out of their own pockets. That's the reality. That's why your budgets are high. I think we just vote. We all have our personal opinions. I think we just vote. Let's vote. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes.
Karen Browning, Orange Road. I'm also a teacher here. Reduction in force. Been through it many of times. We're at bare minimum. We can't do it with less. Our class sizes are about 25 to 27 kids, except for the science classes because that's state law with the labs and stuff like that. So, we are at bare minimum. We can't do it with less. Yes, we had, we have reduced our staff with, because of our, all of our students, you know... I can't even talk. Because of our population of students. We have. We are doing the best with what we have, and we can't do it with less. Please vote for this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes.
Kathy Hawkins, Harrison, 65 Ash Willet Road. Karen very eloquently spoke to class sizes, which is exactly what I would have been sharing information with you. I think, Karen, I hope that that gives you some of the information you were looking for with regard to how many kids are in our classes. The other thing that I would put forth, with all due respect, Mr. Henry, don't believe those numbers. Those are numbers that are, they are true when you look at the entire staff of a school. And that includes everybody from the first-grade teacher to the school adjustment counselor, to the guidance counselor, to the nurse, et cetera. So, when you add all those people in, in addition to the classroom teachers, yes, you come up with 10 to 1 or whatever it is. But as Karen spoke to, most of our classes are up to 23, 24, 25. Next year's 10th grade may, we're desperately hoping that we can avoid this, but they may travel in a clump of 30 as a result of decreased enrollment. So, at some point, take the numbers with a grain of salt, and more importantly, walk in these doors and walk down these halls with me and let me show you our kids and our class sizes and what's happening in our building.
Further discussion? Can you hold the applause for the votes? Further discussion? Yes.
Bernie Perata, South Mountain Road, on the Finance Committee. I think a lot of people are adamant about the schools, but the schools also have to, all us members of the Finance Committee and Select Boards and the three other towns have come to a clear conclusion. What you're asking for is unsustainable, period. If you continue, we're gonna warn you. You continue down this path. We looked at the numbers and where we're going. You are gonna have a financially broke district. You don't wanna hear it. I'm telling you, that's what's gonna happen. And when you have a broke district, you're gonna have DESI come in. Now, we also have other expenses coming that people don't wanna talk about. Problems with the water district, sewer problems, and a public safety building that may, the fire station that has to probably be replaced or rebuilt. But remember, your money goes only so far. If you wanna continue this path, the Finance Committee here, we try to give you guidance. We try to say, what's coming down the road? If you ignore the Finance Committee, you do so at your own peril. You do so at your own responsibility because you're gonna look at a bankrupt district. And I'm not exaggerating. The numbers are there. Fine, if you wanna not listen to us, that's your business. But I'm warning you, reality is coming. And so, I just wanna say, when you make your decision, you think about that. That's like you at home. If you can't pay your mortgage, you can't pay your bills, reality is going to strike you. And that's what's coming. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Please, please hold the applause, folks. Yes, Alex.
So, the pleasure of being on stage tonight is I'm able to see the passion and the energy that's in this room. And I've seen it, I've seen it all. I've seen a lot of unhappiness. I've seen both sides of it. And, you know, look to your left, look to your right. This is the legislative branch of government right here. This is where the heart of the town is. We all have different needs and wants. We all have different values. So, vote your conscience. Vote your heart. Vote what you want. Vote what's best. We have it, this is for the students. This is for the students. But we also have the elderly that need to be taken care of. And Bernie hit it right there. I mean, costs are going up, but we also have to watch out for our kids in this community. And I don't have kids. But being on stage right here and seeing the passion from both sides, I don't really have an answer for you, but just take that going forward in the next couple of minutes. And vote your conscience.
Further discussion on the item? Seeing none? There was a request for a paper ballot on this previously that there was support for. We're gonna use the same procedures last time, coming down this aisle, out the next. If you don't feel comfortable coming down to the front to vote, for whatever reason, feel free to stay in your seat. We'll bring the ballot box to you when everybody who can come on down has voted. You, we are voting on the main motion to raise and appropriate $4,675,882 to pay Northfield's share of the budget for Pioneer Valley... share of the budget for Pioneer Valley Regional School District.
Think about it. Do I get this back?
I think people go the one way on the motions now.
You're optimistic.
Indeed, and we may have a little more right in the world than that.
I don't know what to vote now.
I don't know what to vote now.
That's what they say.
I don't know.
Stephanie went down with her dad, and, yep. She, she says, it's awful to say, but he says, when I go home each night, I feel like I'm gonna...
It is a little bit of that.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
She's by herself, and she's probably connected to people along.
She's by herself, but she don't wear, you know, she's not comfortable.
I like it.
I like that too.
or have somebody next to you raise their hand. On my left, up the left aisle, there's several folks. And then after that, on the right. We'll do this side first this time, and then you guys on the right. Oh, I guess we're going this way first.
Oh, that's right, you go to bed early, I forgot.
We are almost done, we're just gonna get a few more folks on my left, and then we will move on to the next item while this is being counted.
All right, did anybody not get an opportunity to vote? We're going to hold that article open and wait for the vote to come back. There is one more item on the warrant for tonight.
Two more?
Two more items, I'm sorry. Two more items. We're gonna move on to Article Five now.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate an additional one hundred and forty-one dollars to amend the annual town meeting vote for the Recreation Commission for fiscal year 2020 as set forth in Article Five.
Thank you. Debate on the item? Any debate? Does the finance committee have a recommendation on this?
Yes, recommend.
Thank you, the finance committee recommends this. Any further debate? Seeing none? All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Clearly passes unanimously. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2020 for the revolving funds as set forth in Article Six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the item? Does the finance committee have a rec, oh, I'm sorry? Yes.
Could I have an explanation why this article is there? Please.
Sure. Every year in the past, you have actually voted to renew these and to set the minimums, the maximums. You passed a new provision under the law that meant you didn't have to vote every year to renew them, but in our eagerness, we, you still have to vote the maximums, so it was just inadvertently left off the annual. This is what you do every year, these numbers haven't changed. And you'll see it again next year.
The finance committee recommends.
Thank you. Further discussion on the item? Seeing none? All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Clearly passes unanimously. I'm now going to recess the town meeting until we have our ballot count back. Town meeting is now in recess. I don't think it'll take too long, don't go far. I used the recess. During the count, somebody asked about a quorum. The town of Northfield actually voted many years ago to abolish our quorum. So a town meeting technically only really requires a moderator and a town clerk. And we actually saw a spike in attendance once we got rid of the quorum, which is great.
They could have been as twenty years of mock horse, and maybe they would have given you a cheap little march.
Jonathan Parkman, part-time, picked up a shift a month.
I didn't say that.
Friday day shift, it's my comedy film.
You don't want the thrill, the young, it's a young man's game. You don't want the thrill.
Bill D would also like to be on the agenda to discuss the developments of the neighborhood network program for July first.
I'm halfway, call.
What kind of, so you're voting, or you're trailer?
Oh, it's that big, that's that big.
I don't know what to vote now.
Bill D would also like to be on the agenda to discuss the developments of the neighborhood network program for July first.
What kind of, so you're voting, or you're trailer?
You really use what's in the text.
You rely on it, you say, it says, we're seeing, it's not, 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 it's